Thanks for calling us meeting in order, uh, make as soon as you can the First Baptist Street please lead us in the Lord.
Let's go to the Lord and pray. So Heavenly Father, we come before you tonight and we just give you this day. Give you this meeting and this time together, I pray for these that are making decisions about the city. Give them wisdom, Father. We thank you for their service. We thank you for the city and all those who serve the city. And we just God, give you this day. We love you. Thank you for this past Sunday and the chance for us to celebrate the resurrection of our Lord. Help us to do that each and every day in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Please join the clergy, this is the sixth place.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On Texas side, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Before we go to the extended agenda, I would just like to say that we have two proclamation made up for two board members that have been serving on boards for Mineral Wells for a long time. Mr. Ray Mardigal, who's been on the Housing Authority Board since nineteen eighty-six, and Mr. Jim Warren Erwin, who has been on the Airport Advisory Board in nineteen seventy-six. Uh, they could not be with us tonight, but if you just would like to honor them, we will be giving their proclamations out to them. That will be moved into the consent agenda?
Moved to approve. Second.
It's been moved to the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Any nays? Or sorry, any abstentions? Motion passes six zero. Item number five on page twelve, conduct a public hearing and consider an ordinance changing the zoning classification on certain property known as TR twenty-one dash three and a portion of TR twenty-one abstract three seventy-six Winfield Pier Survey, single-family residential, thirty-four oh six highway, one eighty west of Mineral Wells. We would like to open this public meeting at six oh two.
Uh, yes, Mayor Pro Tim, welcome, uh, and council members. This case went before the Planning and Zoning Commission and it's meeting on April the third. If you were to look at the area that you'll find on page twenty-one, you'll see that essentially this is kind of a housekeeping matter. That the property was zoned partially commercial and partially residential. It is a single-family residence and the property is under contract for sale. And the lender will not consternate the financing with the property being zoned partially commercial. And that's the reason for this request. Pardon me. Uh, the Planning and Zoning Commission did hold a public hearing at its meeting and voted unanimously to recommend approval of this zone change request. And you'll find a copy of the ordinance effectuating that, uh, change in the zoning on page sixteen. And we bring that recommendation to you this time. We have Carolyn Hogg with us, the applicant receiving. If you should have any questions of her.
Does the council have any questions? Does anyone in the audience like to speak for it? Anyone to get us? I will close this public meeting at six oh four. What's the pleasure of the council?
We approve an ordinance changing zoning classification on certain property known as TR twenty-one dash three and a portion of TR twenty-one abstract three seventy-six Winfield Pier Survey, a single-family residential at Dallas Square for lot S seven nine. Amending the zoning district map accordingly, providing for a penalty not to exceed two thousand dollars for each violation, providing the ordinance be cumulative and providing for separability governmental immunity injunctions, publication, and effective date.
I'll second.
It's been moved to the second. All those, uh, in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Any intentions? Motion passes six zero. Item number six on page twenty-three, conduct a public hearing and consider an ordinance abandoning and vacating Southeast Second Avenue from Southeast Eighteenth Street to the North Property Line of three fifteen Southeast Nineteenth Street. I would like to open this public hearing at six oh five.
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor Pro Tim and council members. This, uh, case was also presented by the Planning and Zoning Commission at its meeting on April third. Uh, on page twenty-nine, you'll find the plat map that describes the location of this particular abandonment request. Uh, staff did note that there's a sewer line that is in this particular right-of-way. And because of that, requested that an easement be, uh, dedicated or retained uh, due to the fact that we have this utility in the, uh, right-of-way that is requested to be abandoned. Uh, the Planning and Zoning Commission at its meeting did recognize that fact and, uh, considered a recommendation and unanimously approved a recommendation to approve the abandonment with an easement being dedicated or being retained uh, so that we can still continue with that sewer line, uh, in that, uh, particular location. Uh, on, uh, page twenty-five, you'll find an ordinance that would, uh, abandon this particular, uh, piece of property or this area as identified in the abandonment request. And the ordinance does retain a utility easement in the entire right-of-way for the purposes of the sewer line continuing to remain in the right-of-way. And based upon the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission and the ordinance that is prepared at this juncture, we would recommend approval of the ordinance, uh, that you find on page twenty-five does recommend, excuse me, that does abandon this particular piece of right-of-way or stretch of right-of-way, but does retain a utility easement for our purposes at the city.
Any questions, comments from the council? Any of those in the audience for or against the ordinance? I will close this public hearing at six oh seven. What's the pleasure of the council?
We approve an ordinance of City Mineral Wells, Texas, abandoning and vacating Southeast Second Avenue from Southeast Eighteenth Street to North Property Line of two fifteen Southeast Nineteenth Street. And as more particularly described and depicted in Exhibit A, retaining drainage and utility easements thereon, authorizing the execution of quitclaim deed, providing an effective date.
I'll second.
It's been moved to the second. All those, uh, in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions? Passes six zero. Item number seven on page thirty, conduct a public hearing and consider an ordinance abandoning and vacating an undeveloped alley right-of-way located between lots four and five, lots four through sixteen, block eight of the Edgewood Edition. Uh, we'll open the public meeting at six oh seven.
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor Pro Tim and council members. We have yet another, uh, request, an application for the abandonment of an alley in this particular instance. Uh, this case also went before the Planning and Zoning Commission and it's meeting on April the third. Uh, there were no issues as far as, uh, utility easements or the provision of utility lines within the, uh, portion of the alley that is requested for abandonment. Uh, therefore, staff just recommended the approval of the abandonment as requested. Uh, you'll see on an area where this particular piece of, uh, property is located, uh, that, uh, area was identified as page thirty-six. It's in the southwest portion of the community, as I believe has already been mentioned. Uh, on page thirty-two, you'll find an ordinance that would abandon, uh, this particular alley as requested. Uh, the Planning and Zoning Commission did again recommend approval of the abandonment request. And we will bring that recommendation before you at this time.
Any questions, comments in the council? Any of those in the audience in favor or opposed to the ordinance? I will close this public meeting, or public, yeah, public meeting, at six oh nine. What's the pleasure of the council?
We approve an ordinance of City Mineral Wells, Texas, banning, vacating certain undeveloped alley. Right-of-way located between lots four and five and lots fourteen through sixteen, blockade of the Edgewood Edition. And as more particularly described and depicted in Exhibit A, authorizing the execution of quitclaim deed, providing an effective date.
I'll second.
It's been moved to the second. All those, uh, in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes six zero. Item number eight on page thirty-seven, consider allocation of funds to Pulse Ministries and corporate.
Yes, Mr. Mayor Pro Tim, council members. You will recall that in the current year budget, the council has approved ten thousand dollars to support the bounce program, which has been, uh, in Mineral Wells the last few summers and has been active, active in renovating a number of homes, uh, for deserving individuals within our community. Uh, we've been informed that the bounce program will not be visiting Mineral Wells this summer. And Pulse Ministries, whom I believe you all are very familiar with, has requested that the bounce program allocation be, uh, reallocated to their organization for essentially the same purpose, the rehabilitation of houses here, uh, in our community in conjunction with our Project Three Sixty-five program, which this particular year is in the Pasadena Heights area. Uh, I believe that y'all are all familiar with Rose Jordan, the executive director. Rose is with us this evening. If you were to have any questions of her, on page thirty-five, excuse me, thirty-eight, you'll find a, uh, letter, uh, that Ms. Jordan has prepared for the council's review, essentially describing how they would use the monies. Uh, and then also on page thirty-nine, she's identified those homes that they have already selected, uh, for work for this upcoming year. And so we would, uh, present this recommendation to you to reallocate those monies. Ms. Jordan is here. If you have any questions of her.
Good evening.
If anyone's asking a question, I just want to say thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
And that's, you know, when we had Pulse last time, uh, you know, it was one of those things that recognizing about was not going to be back this summer, uh, that there wasn't going to be any work if bounce did not come back. If we did not allocate what we had previously approved for bounce to transfer back over, to transfer to Pulse, so that they could go on ahead and do it. So, I mean, that's, that's why I asked for this to be put on there. It's simply a matter of housekeeping, so we can continue forward with the good progress we've made in cleaning up the neighborhoods and the community.
And this will be done the same way it's been done in the past, where you'll be submitting receipts and what we bring.
Yeah, I was just talking to Lance, and so we'll do just what they do in the past. We'll actually give, submit a supply list, a detailed supply list. Uh, we are actually already in the process of that. We got the bulk of it done last Thursday. Construction, uh, my construction coordinator here in our team will go back out this Thursday to try to get the last two homes. Um, so we'll submit that supply list to Lance, and then, um, they'll do as they've always done is submit for bids through the, the local businesses and then, so we won't actually have to handle the funds.
Have you got anybody in part with you yet?
We have, as far as like volunteers or corporates. I, I know, I have a couple of churches that have said that they, uh, two to three teams. Um, we have one team that wants to come in from Arlington to take care of the home that's over on, um, Southeast Second. Um, and so we are just now in the process. We just finished our spring mission. What we've done is Project Three Sixty-five Spring Mission every year is our four weeks in the streets. That just finished this Saturday, so now I can focus my brain efforts on, on, um, pursuing what's happening with the summer mission. Um, but we do have, I think, three or four solid teams. But we're just now in the phase of being able to start recruiting teams and sponsors. Um, the chamber is sponsoring a mayor's lunch where we'll actually get to present to local businesses and start looking at, trying to bring in corporate sponsors and, and more teams to work.
I'll second.
It's been moved to the second to the, uh, funds to Pulse Ministries. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes six zero. Item number nine on page forty, consider resolution authorizing execution of amendment number one to lease agreement between City Mineral Wells and Cool City Electronics Incorporated.
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor Pro Tim, and the council members, you may recall that I informed the council roughly six weeks ago that Cool City Electronics was closing its doors here in Mineral Wells. Cool City had been a tenant at the airport at the Downey Maintenance Hangar since two thousand eleven. Uh, the investor group, uh, is attempting to liquidate the business at this particular time. And they have asked if they might be able to continue with their lease, uh, at the, uh, lease premises for the foreseeable future as they are attempting to liquidate the assets of the company. Uh, they have offered to pay us one thousand dollars a month right now. Essentially what they're doing and what they anticipate doing in the future is to use the, uh, lease premises for storage of their, uh, equipment and furniture and fixtures and the like. So there really will not be any activity, uh, undergoing at the location, but strictly this would be for storage purposes. Uh, they have suggested that they would pay the city a thousand dollars a month. And we have negotiated the lease term of December thirty-first, basically by two thousand seventeen, that would be the termination point. Uh, this would be a month-to-month lease again, that would give them an opportunity to liquidate their business in an orderly fashion. Uh, the lease alto also has a thirty-day notice provision, uh, so that if we are able to secure a tenant for this leased space, uh, that we can provide notice for Cool City to vacate for a new tenant. At the present time, we do not have a replacement tenant, uh, that has expressed an interest in, in the property. Uh, the other, uh, fact of the matter is, is that we will be, uh, given the opportunity to, uh, show the property uh, and have access to the property to hopefully secure a replacement tenant. Uh, as a precondition to negotiating such an arrangement, uh, I told the investor group of Cool City that since there is a rent, a rearage presently, that, uh, they needed to make a good faith payment to the city to continue any kind of arrangement with them rather than us simply terminating the lease. Uh, they have paid us seven thousand dollars, uh, as a good faith gesture to continue with this arrangement. And also they have paid us a thousand dollars, uh, for each of the months of February, March, and April, uh, since they have ceased operations. So we are presently, uh, in possession of ten thousand dollars of their money, which would allow us to move forward with this arrangement. Uh, given this does allow this company the opportunity to liquidate their assets, we still have the thirty-day notice, uh, ability, flexibility with them. Uh, and this does continue with some manner of a revenue stream for the particular space. We would recommend that the council approve the resolution authorizing disamendment to the, uh, lease that is presently in place between the city and Cool City Electronics Incorporated.
What does that leave in a rearage?
Probably in the range of twenty-five thousand, yeah.
Any more questions, comments? What's the pleasure of the council?
We approve the resolution authorizing execution of amendment number one to lease agreement between City Mineral Wells, Texas and Cool City Electronics.
I'll second.
It's been moved to the second to authorize the execution of amendment number one to lease agreement between City Mineral Wells and Cool City Electronics. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes six zero. Item number ten on page forty-five, consider resolution authorizing execution of hangar ground lease at Mineral Wells Municipal Airport between City of Mineral Wells and Jamie Stewart.
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor Pro Tim and council members. We were approached probably three or four months ago on Mr. Jamie Stewart, who has a building construction business out of Weatherford, uh, with the prospect of, uh, entering into a ground lease so that he might build a private hangar, uh, at the airport. He presently has two aircraft that he flies, and as a part of his construction business, he flies quite frequently. Uh, his, uh, activities are currently located at the Parker County Airport. That's not adequate for his needs. He actually has a private hangar over there as well. And he would like to move over to our airport, and we certainly think that's a good, uh, positive move from the standpoint of our airport. Uh, we negotiated an arrangement with Mr. Stewart and presented that to the airport board at its last meeting. And the airport board, uh, concurred, uh, that, uh, this would be good for the airport. It should be, uh, an arrangement, uh, transaction that we would want to enter into with Mr. Stewart. What he's suggesting to do is to lease approximately four thousand square feet of property. You'll find that identified on page fifty-two. It's one of the better remaining locations immediately on the ramp south of the terminal. If you would be leasing four thousand square feet at that identified location, uh, that you find on the map on page fifty-two, the aerial photo, uh, he would pay five hundred sixty dollars per year, which roughly is fourteen cents per square foot. Basically, the, the going rate for ground leases in this general vicinity for this type of project is anywhere from twelve to fifteen cents per square foot per year. So this reflects a fourteen cent per square foot per year lease rate. Uh, and, uh, he would have one year to construct the hangar. The lease term is for twenty years. At the end of the twenty-year period, the hangar itself becomes the property of the city. That's very standard as far as, uh, the manner in which ground leases are handled here in the state of Texas. It comports very, very closely with what Texas Aviation recommends as far as how these deals are done. That's one of the reasons, because the city ultimately becomes the owner of the improvements after twenty years. That's one of the reason, reasons that the ground lease is not particularly expensive. Because we, each year, we gain a pro rata share of the ownership of the hangar in effect. Uh, and at the end of the twenty years, uh, again, the property would, uh, the improvements would revert to the city. Uh, you would have then two five-year auctions to rent the hangar itself back from the city, uh, for those option periods. Typically, the way that, uh, we do that and it's structured this way in the lease is that the hangar owner at the time, if he exercises his options, then he would be able to lease the hangar back for half of what a comparable hangar lease would be at the airport. So we're recognizing the fact that the city is getting the value of the improvement. And he also has some upside protection as far as what the lease will be twenty years out if he exercises that option. And by doing it that way, also, we're not restricting ourselves as to what that lease value may be twenty years out, because we certainly don't know what a hangar will be leasing for twenty years from now. Also, there is a, an escalation provision that you'll find in the lease. I believe it's two cents per year in, in five-year increments that the actual lease cost to him for the ground lease increases. So there is an escalator, uh, in the lease itself as to the ground lease and the value and the cost of the ground lease to, uh, Mr. Stewart. Uh, we feel like this would be very advantageous to the, uh, airport if we would have two additional hanger aircraft at the airport. That's always very valuable for us. And also, Mr. Stewart is a frequent flyer, if you will. And, uh, we anticipate that he will purchase quite a bit of fuel, uh, being, uh, hanger here, uh, at our airport. Uh, given all those circumstances, we would, uh, bring forward the recommendation from the air, from the airport board that this ground lease be approved. Our city council would request that the council, uh, approve the resolution that you find on page forty-seven, uh, authorizing the mayor to execute this ground lease at the Mineral Wells Municipal Airport.
What's the approximate value of the hangar?
We think it will be in excess of a hundred thousand dollars. And we also, he will be paying property tax on that, so that's of value to the city as well. So he, he's required to pay all of the insurance taxes, basically everything that comes with the ownership of a piece of property.
What is the standard in which you have to build the hangar?
He has to build it to a typical code. He has to build an engineered structure that withstands a wind load of at least eighty-five miles an hour. And again, he has one year to build the hangar. If he doesn't obtain a certificate of occupancy within one year, then the city has the right, not necessarily shall, but has the right to terminate the lease. So in other words, if he does not follow through on the construction of the hangar, he does not hold the property for the entire twenty-year period of time. So there's, there's a limitation there. He either needs to build a hangar or he loses, uh, the right to have access to the lease and we can terminate the lease.
Any more questions, comments? How would we accept resolution authorizing execution of hangar ground lease at Mineral Wells Municipal Airport between the City of Mineral Wells and Jamie Stewart?
I'll second that.
It's been moved to the second to be, uh, authorize execution of hangar ground lease at Mineral Wells Municipal Airport between the City of Mineral Wells and Jamie Stewart. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Any abstentions? Motion passes five. We have all the city council will begin its executive session on the, on this, the eighteenth day of April two thousand seventeen at six twenty-five o'clock P.M. The subject matter of this executive session deliberation is the follows. In accordance with Texas Government Code, Chapter five five one, Subchapter D, the Mineral Wells City Council will recess into the executive session, close meeting, to discuss the following. Deliberation regarding the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property. It's been moved to the second. The Mineral Wells City Council has completed its executive session on this, the eighteenth day of April two thousand seventeen at seven oh nine o'clock P.M. Next on the agenda on page fifteen, item thirteen, consider resolution authorizing, sorry, execution of purchase contract for property located at one hundred Southeast Sixth Avenue, also known as the Bank of America Building.
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor Pro Tim and council members. Uh, you were just in the executive session discussing the nature of the proposed purchase contract. Uh, in general terms, uh, what we have is a purchase contract that anticipates the purchase price of one point one million dollars for the subject facility with a fifteen thousand dollar refundable earnest money deposit to be made upon execution of the contract. Uh, the city essentially will have a quote, free look, end quote, uh, to evaluate the building until August thirty-first, two thousand seventeen. Uh, if the, uh, intention of the council at that point is to proceed with the project, uh, then the contract contemplates, uh, the payment of an non-refundable auction fee of twenty-five thousand dollars. Uh, and the purchase price would increase accordingly at that point by that twenty-five thousand dollars. Uh, again, this gives us an adequate period of time to do the feasibility analysis of required to determine the suitability of the building and the cost at which, of the building could be reconfigured to work as a city hall and, uh, police, uh, facility. And we would, uh, present to you the resolution on page fifty-four. It would authorize the mayor to execute the purchase contract that you had before you leave.
Any questions, comments? And would we, uh, approve the resolution authorizing the execution of purchase contract for the property located at one hundred Southeast Sixth Avenue, also known as the Bank of America Building?
I'll second.
It's been moved to the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes five. Item number fourteen on page seventy-eight, consider resolution authorizing execution of the letter agreement with Brown Reynolds Watford Architects, B R W, for feasibility study for their municipal facilities.
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor Pro Tim and council members. You will recall at your last meeting, uh, the council, uh, awarded, uh, the proposal for the feasibility analysis for the Bank of America Building and the pre-standing fire station to, uh, Brown Reynolds Watford Architects, B R W. Uh, we were authorized as staff to negotiate a project contract to that effect. Uh, you will find a letter agreement, uh, on page eighty, which enumerates the scope of work as well as the, uh, payment to be involved in this particular endeavor. Uh, the letter agreement proposes a fee now to exceed forty-eight thousand dollars providing the entire scope of services. Uh, you will note that the scope of services is, is identified, uh, in phases, and each of the phases has a corresponding cost. So if we were to continue in this process and not do all of the phases, then we would not be required to pay for undone or unfinished portions of the scope of work. Uh, we believe that the, uh, contract, uh, appropriately describes the scope of work and fees associated with that, and we would recommend that the council approve the resolution you find on. recommend that the council approve the resolution you find on page seventy-nine, authorizing execution of this letter agreement with B R W Architects.
Any questions or comments? Have we approved the resolution authorizing the execution of the letter agreement with Brown, Reynolds, and Watford Architects for feasibility study of all the municipal facilities?
I'll second.
It's been moved to second to authorize execution of letter agreement with Brown, Reynolds, Watford Architects, B R W, for feasibility study for municipal facilities. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes six to zero. Item number fifteen on page eighty-six. Consider approval of letter of engagement with George Morgan, Senior C C, Stereotype Public Accounting, for audit services for fiscal period September period of two thousand seventeen.
This is a rather routine agreement with them. They've been on our orders since two thousand ten, I believe. Uh, they've certainly been here since I've been here since two thousand thirteen, and, uh, this is just a routine, uh, retainage letter that they've sent us. Of course, the attorneys looked at it, and, uh, I've looked it over. It looks appropriate for us, and again, they've done our audits for the last seven years for sure, uh, last four for sure. It, uh, see no reason for us to change.
When they were here a few meetings ago, gentlemen, they had, uh, to say that his manner of presentation of previous year's audit, uh, decrease in funds due to circumstances related to the drought and other topics, I was not overly impressed with his presentation of the audit, and honestly, I think we're kind of at a point where as a matter of public trust, there's an issue of public trust with the accounting firm that we've had the last seven or so years. Uh, I would like us to consider not approving this, uh, letter of engagement, and that rather we would direct city staff to open up the possibility to bring in a different auditing, a different accounting firm, uh, going forward, uh, that perhaps, you know, maybe we should change, just like government officials. Maybe we should change every ten years or so on accounting services.
We could certainly do that. Uh, the problem is, is finding somebody in the city to do it. Uh, my understanding is they have hard time finding these people, and, but I understand your concern.
And you know, if, if our council has to come out of Arlington, then maybe we need to look further east for accounting firms. You know, 'cause, 'cause there's nothing like your accounting firm that you pay dropping your city and your council in the vat, saying revenues are down because as a city council, you kept your word and you put the water rates back at their pre-drought rate, and then the accountant getting up and going, "Well, your revenues were down because you didn't take in as much money on your water sales." The previous year, when you charged sixty percent more under a drought, was the entire thing for that, and you kept your word and you did what was good and what was right and what was honorable, but your money's down, and so your revenues are down, and you're not doing as good as the city because of that. I don't know, Mr. Moran. I don't look at the hired hands. No disrespect, council, but attorneys work for other people. It's not the other way around. Accountants work for us. The least they can do is give an accurate representation and not drop things in the fire and make it look like everybody else didn't do their job except for them.
Yes, sir. And, and years previous to that, their senior partners always come and presented the audit, presented the audit, done a much better job. Uh, we could certainly, of course, it depends on what council wants to do. We could certainly ask him to come back and, and do a better job. But again, what?
I would like to say, I disagree with you in, in some ways there. The reason you have an outside independent audit firm to come in and audit our financials is to show us the true picture where this council has no influence on how that's worded. That's the whole reason behind outside audit. Uh, if maybe his presentation skills weren't good, but I, I disagree with that. I, I think that's the whole theory of the audit.
And I think to only present half of the picture like he did, that doesn't really serve the purpose of the audit either. He threw plenty of his opinion in on it, not the facts. He threw plenty of his opinion. And if I had, if I had a dime for everyone who came to me and said that they did not trust the accounting, that they did not trust certain people in the city government as related to that accounting firm, and that they wished that they had an independent firm that would come back and re-audit the audits of this firm and city staff and city accounts because they do not trust what this firm has presented in years past? And I'm saying, fine, open it up. You know, granted, you know, we had to get new attorneys because Mr. Galt retired after, after years of service, but, you know, it's not the job of an audit to drop people in the fire for doing what they said they'd do in the first place.
Can I change the subjects just a little bit? Um, John, I know you work for other cities. In your opinion, the cost that, uh, George Morgan Snead puts forward, I think, where are we in ballpark? So let's say we went to, you know, another firm, we're looking at, you know, larger costs, or is it in the ballpark of what we're actually looking at, or is that?
I'd say that their cost is pretty standard.
Okay. And have we ever, I guess, compared with shop for any of those? Or has it really just been, for lack of a better term, easier to just say what we have?
Well, like I said, this, this has been an audit firm since I've been here. I think twenty-ten was the last time they went out for, uh, for, uh, RFQs on it, I believe. We certainly go out for RFQs for audit firms. If, if that's what council directs us to do, I could put together one and do it pretty quick. Um, take me, uh, I could probably have an RFQ back to the next meeting or two, and we could go out for RFQs and see, um, what we can come up with. As far as responses, uh, we certainly do that. Uh, have no problem at all doing that, if that's what you want me to do.
Is there sufficient time to do that prior to the time that the auditors need to go to work?
Yes, sir. I believe so. We would be tight, but I, I believe so.
Would we be better off to consider going with, uh, G M N S with its audit and with the idea that we're going to search for a new audit team after that, even the possibility of developing a homegrown audit team rather than to search out of, out of our area?
Well, that's a difficult question for me to answer. Um...
Can we try and answer that?
Sure.
Yeah, I don't think any of it worked really.
George Morgan Snead, uh, came on board, uh, when we requested proposals for, uh, audit services when Crawford Carter Thompson, uh, moved out of the area and, and now only does tax work. Crawford Carter Thompson did, uh, the city's audit for many years. Uh, they did the audit for virtually all of the governmental entities, well, not the hospital, but certainly the county for a number of years. And because of Gasmly thirty-four, the Sarbanes Oxley, all of the federal requirements, uh, over the last several years that were placed on audit firms, uh, Crawford Carter decided that they would exit that, uh, area. Uh, and there were quite a number of firms that essentially did the same thing, uh, simply because of the, uh, requirements put on them at that point. Uh, the county uses a firm out of Wichita Falls. Uh, when we, uh, initially looked at, uh, changing auditors, uh, when Crawford Carter got out of that line of business, I believe that we received, uh, proposals from a, a firm or two in Abilene, I believe the same firm out of Wichita Falls at the county, and this is all just recollection. Uh, I believe we did receive a, a proposal from that firm, and then, uh, George Morgan Snead, who does quite a bit of auditing all over, uh, the Parker County area in particular. Uh, they have a good reputation. They're a good firm. They're very well-known. They've been in business for probably forty years. Uh, so that's kind of the history. Uh, there really aren't any other auditors, uh, here locally, Councilman Johnson, that, that are in the audit business anymore. Uh, again, that, that pool of audit firms has significantly declined or been diminished as a result of all the federal rules and regulations that have been placed on them and, and the cost of, of continuing in the audit business. Uh, so that, that's how we, uh, came to use George Morgan Snead. They're highly recommended. Uh, we've had no problem with them in the past, uh, and, uh, so we've used them, I think, rather successfully over the last several years. As far as a timing issue, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, John, that the auditors don't come in until August and do their, their pre-audit work, so, uh, there's not any great time consideration as far as getting someone, uh, you know, under, uh, an agreement or contract in the next thirty days or sixty days. Uh, the only, the only issue would be, and, and we've already kind of busted this, the, uh, uh, the charter does have a requirement that I believe in the month of January, we're supposed to have the audit firm under contract. We're already well beyond that, so apparently you had some difficulty getting a proposal from George Morgan Snead timely. Uh, so if council's desire is to go out, uh, and solicit, uh, proposals from, uh, qualified audit firms, we can certainly do that.
I'd just like to say, I'm not opposed to bringing in another audit firm that puts our citizens' minds at ease, that everything is above board. I just didn't like the comment that we didn't like the presentation and the facts that were stated. That, that's not ours to control. But I, I'm certainly for if that, if we, our citizens are concerned that they don't think things are above board, then by all means, we should do that.
I could put together an RFQ or an RFP, whichever one it is. I could have it, to give myself enough time to do it right, not next meeting, but the meeting after that, the second meeting in May. I could have one back to you for, uh, for, for consideration.
You, you would probably want to give thirty days, thirty to forty-five days for the firms to respond, 'cause they're, they're pretty much gonna have a canned response, you know, 'cause all these audits are virtually the same. So it wouldn't be a lot of difficult work for them to prepare a response, so we can pretty quick turnaround on requests for qualifications or proposals, so.
And I've done it before. I've done it a couple of times, so I'm familiar with the process.
Any more questions, council? What's the question, council?
Let's be direct. Set up staff to develop RFPs.
Second. It's been moved to second for the city staff to develop an RFP. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes six. This meeting is adjourned.